I almost wore that Santa Claus himself.
That's it. Kefren, Greppken, Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
I make a motion to go into closed session to discuss strategy with council about matters where litigation is imminent because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice the position of the city in that litigation.
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
We're gonna have to start with the Pierce Street one, because you're standing on the other.
Move we adjourn to closed session.
Second.
Greppken.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Kefren.
Aye.
Be back here at 4:05.
Okay.
4:05.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Kefren.
Here.
Here. Can we stand for a moment of silence, prayer followed by the plug of allegiance, please?
I will, but not now.
Okay. Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of our citizenship, states, one nation, under our individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Linda Phillips, would you meet the council at the front, please?
Yeah, might as well.
Might as well.
There you go.
We're all coming down.
Wow.
Because Linda's like, a lot of times, I think I just read 26 years.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Well, it says 26 year, but.
That one year was really a bad year.
Twenty-seven felt like fifty-four, huh?
Anyway, Linda has worked for the area of substance abuse prevention and mobilization for 26 years. She served as the executive director of Sulan Cares about substance abuse since 1990. And whereas Linda currently serves as a community liaison to the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission, where she has been instrumental in fulfilling the mission of the Mayor's Youth Commission, which is to explore, communicate, and provide for the needs, problems, issues, and activities affecting the city's youth. And whereas Linda also serves on the boards of the Sulan Council of Child Abuse and Neglect Comprehensive Strategy Council, Jackson Recovery Centers, Mercy's Reality Education Alcohol Program, and the Sulan Community Health Foundation. She's the past reger of Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church in Sioux City and a sustaining member of the Junior League of Sioux City. Linda has worked tirelessly for many years to help the citizens of Sioux City, and now therefore I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the Sioux City on behalf of City Council and the citizens of Sioux City, Iowa, do hereby deem an honor.
Somebody obviously hijacked Brittany my resume. Just want to thank you. It's been an honor. We've taken a lot of risks throughout the years with the Youth Commission. I can remember when I first started Youth Selected as a council, maybe five or six kids a year, and now we're up to 50 to 60 kids a year that we bring on. So, thank you very much. Thank you for your support of Sulan Cares for the past 30 years. It's been an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. I would like to say 1990, I remember it well, because the Mayor's Youth Commission was actually run by adults and the kids had very little to do with it until Linda got involved. And she realized that youth could do a much better job than adults do. So, thank you, Linda, for all those years.
And I want to add one thing, too. Linda was very humble when we talked to her last Thursday, and she did not want to be recognized at all. And I said, "For all the time and energy that you've stuck into Sioux City and to the Mayor's Youth Commission, you need to be recognized. If not for yourself, we want to do it for you." And I just want to say thank you so much for all that you've done, because it's huge. You know, you are the person that helps make the kids' lives better, and the Mayor's Youth Commission brings that all forward, and that's what it's all about. So, thank you, thank you. And I know that, maybe, why don't you introduce your. I'd like to introduce Brittany Book, who is going to take over for me. End up. It's gonna be even a better Youth Commission and Sulan Cares.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck, Linda. Enjoy your retirement. Regis, you want to come up and tell us why you want to serve on the Arts Center Board of Trustees?
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Regis Garvey. My name is spelled R-E-G-I-S-G-A-R-V-E-Y. I live at 2806 Sunset Circle, Sioux City, Iowa, 51104. I came to this community 32 years ago, and from the get-go, got involved in the Arts Center. I've always been interested in art and the arts. And I have been involved with the Arts Center in many different capacities. The past three years, I've kind of taken a sabbatical. I've got a new career. I was battling a personal health issue, and then I was helping my best friend try to get through cancer, who was diagnosed with stage four, and unfortunately, she lost that battle. But now I want to get back involved. I've always been involved in the community, done a lot of different volunteer projects, and would like to be a trustee on the Sioux City Arts Center.
Have you served there before? You have, haven't you?
I was on the board. I've also helped with fundraisers. My husband and I, we were major donators to the blockbuster exhibitions.
I've done many things with Regis, and I got to tell you, you'd be an asset to this, to the Arts Center. So, I really.
Thank you.
Really would like to see you on there.
I loved your question about what kind of commitment could we expect from you. Anyone that knows me, and I don't know if you talked to any of the references that I gave, when I commit to something, it's 100%. And if I can't make that commitment, I'm not going to do it.
I can tell you something. This is one of the things that Regis told me when I first got into council and how involved I was. She says, "You need to slow down, and you need to have some people help you." And I took that advice.
Thank you.
Because you can't do everything. And so, I know that you're someone to take a look up to, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
It's a valuable asset to this community, and I think I bring a lot of experience to that board that could help. I have, I would really like to see the Arts Center expand its visibility in organizations so that it can get even more visibility, and just want to make sure that it stays here in the community, and we can always enjoy it.
Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your commitment. Absolutely. All right, thank you. Tom? You've been on this committee before, right?
Yes, I have.
Haven't had enough, huh?
Coming back for more. Tom Barrektor, I live at 4116 Hickory Lane in Sioux City, Iowa, president of F&amp;M Bank. We have banks across the river, but we have a bank here at Third and Virginia. And I think I was one of the first ones to go on the Effective Fiscal Management Committee, and we combined that with the Public Policy Committee. And I'm coming off of my term from this last year, and I'd like to reapply for another term, so.
Deal. Thanks, Tom. Thanks for your good work.
Questions for Tom?
He's a good guy.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Brooke Gilbert? Environmental Advisory Board? You're on there now, right?
I am.
Okay. Go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself, Brooke.
I am an Akron native, and I went to school in Minnesota for wildlife conservation and then veterinary medicine, moved here in 2010. And I work at South Sioux Animal Hospital, as a veterinarian there. I'm hoping to do another term on the Environmental Advisory Board, helping with the current issues that they're facing, education and public outreach specifically to the children, about recycling, waste management, ecosystem conservation, and wildlife preservation.
Questions?
Thanks for serving. Thanks for reapplying.
Brooke takes care of my dusty boy, so she gets a vote for me, that's for sure.
That's why.
She takes care of my puppy, so she gets a vote. D is a historic preservation. Jonathan, I'm not going to try your last name. I'm sorry. You can pronounce it for us. How's that sound?
That's okay. My last name is pronounced Wadahaski. I go by John. Wife and I moved here in 1993 from Des Moines. We live at 31036th Street in Sioux City, 51104, just up the street from Perry Creek Elementary. Jim Jung asked me to apply for the commission. He's also tasked me to work with him on a historic project for the downtown buildings here in Sioux City. We're going to create, hoping to create a virtual tour, hoping to create some what are called QR codes, so people can scan the code if it's on the door of the building. Because some of these historic buildings are privately used. You just can't walk into them and visit them. So, with the help of Jim, myself, Tom Munson at the Public Museum Research Center, and also, we're going to involve George Lindblade for the photography part of it, and so we're hoping to get this project done. I think our first building is going to be the courthouse in celebration of its upcoming kind of anniversary next year. So, I look forward to, I hope to serve on the commission, and I hope to be a good asset for it.
You sound like you'd be an awesome asset. And with Jim Jung behind you, you can't go wrong. So, it sounds like maybe with you behind him, you know, it's going to work out great, so.
And these historic documents for John Cook, do you do that here in town, or did you do that somewhere else before you came?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Well, you put that you helped with the historic documents donated by the University of Arizona, that once belonged to Sioux City founder Dr. John Cook.
Yes. I've done, on and off throughout the years, I've done research at the research center just on projects that I've been, or history that I've been interested in with the city. And I was down there when Grayson Linda was still the curator. We got to talking about Dr. Cook, and she handed me a folder of documents and said, "You might be interested in these." And they hadn't cataloged them yet, but she let me go through them. And one of the documents ended up being what's called a petition for affiliation to a Masonic lodge. Now, I'm a member of the Masonic fraternity here in Sioux City. Now, at the time, we had no Masonic lodges, but Dr. John Cook petitioned to join a lodge in Potawatomi County. That's where he came from, when he came up here to plat the city, and a library and museum in Cedar Rapids, or, I'm sorry, Cedar Falls, and they pointed out that it's a petition for affiliation. It's something that we did not know about Dr. John Cook until then. So, by proving what that document was, now we know that's now part of Sioux City's history.
Wow. That's awesome.
So.
You sound like a good man for the job.
Thank you.
That's for sure. PAPL, Parks and Rec Advisory Board?
Hello.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, some of you know me and have served on boards that I presently, or previously was a staff member for at Simcoe. I was there for three years. I served as their GIS analyst and worked really closely with Matt when it came to trails. And I guess my interest for joining Parks and Rec after being on the EAB for four years has to do with quality of life, green space, and just making Sulan a better place for people to move to and continue to live in.
Very good. Thanks for applying.
Great, yeah.
Sounds great. I do see there are two vacancies, if I'm reading this correctly, and there are two vacancies that people have reapplied. Is that, can I read them out?
Cindy Brewer and Scott V F have reapplied. Scott won't leave until January 8th.
Okay.
He is.
Well, thanks for.
Thank you.
Applying.
Thanks.
Thanks for your consideration.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
We'll go on to the consent agenda, which today is items three through 13C. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is called for by a council member. If you want to speak on any item today or under citizen concerns, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is a reading of the City Council minutes of December 11th, 12th, and 13th, 2017. Four is a resolution accepting a donation for the Howard Logan family from the Howard Logan family for the Baumgartner Expo Center. Five is a resolution proposing to sell property at 1228 Cornelia Street. The conditioners, Brian and Carol Pettiplace. Six is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Buy Tra for the Police Video Training Simulator. I sent an email to the sheriff and to our chief of police. You need to be congratulated for working together on a project. I would hope that the Sioux City Journal would do a story upon that once you get the equipment installed and they see that. Thank you.
Well, I was actually going to say something to you, Chief. If you could maybe coordinate with the city manager, you can say. I just was wondering if you could maybe have an invite council down to see what that's about or showcase that technology. If you could coordinate with the manager, I'd appreciate that.
You pack a heat. Do you want to take a run at it, or what?
Concealing carry, I got in my backpack.
So, we have to get it for you.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Seven are annual reports. A is a motion accepting and approving the Sioux Gateway Airport FY 2017 Annual Report. B is a motion accepting the FY 2017 Environmental Advisory Board Annual Report. C is a motion accepting and approving the Advanced Facility Advisory Board 2017 Annual Report. D is a motion accepting and approving the Historic Preservation Commission FY 2017 Annual Report. E is a motion accepting the FY 2017 Sioux City Transit Advisory Board Annual Report. F is a motion accepting the Sioux City Yamanashi Sister City Committee 2017 Annual Report. A are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing $50,800 in emergency solution grant funds for the Center for Sulan Bridges West Transitional Housing. B is a resolution authorizing $79,740 in emergency solution grant funds for the Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence Emergency Shelter. C is a resolution authorizing the airport director to receive an air service sustainment grant from the IDOT to assist in marketing efforts at the Sioux Gateway Airport.
Mike, I had a question about 8C, Mike, if I could. I was just wondering, just curiosity, can you talk a little bit about where that grant money would go then? Does that, do we just earmark that specifically for the marketing efforts, or how do we, how do they track that?
We do. We have three, Mike Colet, Assistant City Manager. We have three annual grants we receive from Iowa DOT, and this is one of them. So, this is an annual grant for this amount. This is the cap on it each year, and it has to go for marketing efforts, traditional, whole community.
Okay. And do we have like a set of, this is what we've done in the past, or this is what we'd like to do in the future? I mean, as far as social media or anything like?
We do incorporate some social media as well. We work that through the city's social media.
Okay.
So, we've done different things.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious. Thank you.
You bet.
C is a resolution authorizing, oh, I already did that one. I'm sorry. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving amendment number one to the contract with Art Shop's Historic District Roundhouse Enhancement Project. B is a resolution approving an addendum to the agreement with the IDOT for segment two of the I-29 Reconstruction Project. C is a resolution approving a subordination agreement with Central Bank in connection with the remediation of lead-based paint at 507 Southwest Scott Street. D is a resolution approving a second amendment to the development and assessment agreements with Echo Electric Supply for the redevelopment of the property at 1200 Cunningham Drive.
Need to abstain on that one, Mayor, for any conflict of interest.
E is a resolution approving a license and naming agreement with Wells Enterprises for the naming rights of the Cone Park Day Lodge contents at Cone Park.
I had a, Matt, just a second. With that one, I was just worried a little bit. I just wanted, again, probably clarification and assurance. As far as like the, is this the furniture and everything, the contents of the lodge and the inside, right?
Yeah. Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. The donation we receive from Wells would cover all the furniture and all the concession equipment inside the lodge.
And my one question or the follow-up to that was, I was just a little worried about the durability of some of that. I mean, because especially in a winter lodge, I think things get trashed pretty easily. As far as replacing them, then, do we have to consult with them, or once we use that and replace it, it's now?
They just gave us the funds. We can use the funds however we want, so the replacement costs would be on the city in the future.
Okay, because the.
We got stuff that would last.
We bought this stuff already? I mean, that's the stuff.
We have it there.
Currently, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's there.
So, I'm just saying, I wonder when we replace that, or if, then we just replace it, we don't have to worry about naming rights or consulting, or whatever.
Correct. They're.
Twenty-year deal.
They have a 20-year deal, so they'll have rights for the contents within the 20 years. So, we would replace anything that we would need to replace on our own within that 20 years, and then we can look to renew with them after 20 years, or look to somebody else. And we have a representative from Wells here, if you had any questions for them.
That's good. I just wanted the clarification. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank Wells. I need to abstain.
Yeah, thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
Nine E.
Mr. Merle will be abstaining on nine E. Twenty is a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Management Agreement with Kinseth Hospitality Company regarding the management and operation of the Convention Center. Ten are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the Utility Department's payroll complement by reclassifying water treatment plant electric instrument technician to electronic specialist. B is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by adopting an updated job description for the electronic specialist position. Eleven are actions authorizing issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing final payment to MLS landscaping and design for the Promenade Improvement Project. I still have concerns about that project. We have made it very, very unfriendly for handicapped people to get out. And you also, then, in the sidewalk, you put the light pole right in the middle. And it's not your problem, Melissa. It's Mr. Carney's.
We've gone on and looked at it, and I actually went and looked at it yesterday with Alex. Here's the issue with the handicap parking spots is in that block, we have 20, currently have 23 handicap parking spots in that one, in that block from Jones to Virginia. The old, the way that street was set up prior to that, yeah, you were van accessible at those two spots nearest to the theater. We got a concern when it first reopened about that not being a van accessible anymore, and that's when we went down and looked at it, and my thought process was is, if we move those to somewhere where there'll be van accessible, you're going to make it a farther distance for people that don't need van accessibility, people that have mobility limitations but aren't bound to a wheelchair. We, the 10 spots that are down at the corner by the west entrance of the Convention Center, I think there's actually 10 spots in the parking lot at the United Center. There's five across the street. About 11 of those are van accessible spots. Right now, across the street, in the current parking lot, which will go away when the hotel project starts, there's several van accessible spots. There's five spots in total. I think only two of those are van accessible, though. There's also a van accessible spot on the adjacent block at the very corner of Virginia and Fourth Street. So, I didn't want to move those ones that were providing two spaces for, like I said, people who don't need van accessibility. I talked to Melissa this morning. One of the ideas that Alex and I looked at yesterday was removing the curb section in the one area. And that, we've talked about maybe putting in a new crosswalk, moving two spots over to the north side of the street. I think those are all things we need a little bit more looking into, but that's why we didn't move those spots from the location.
I'm not asking to move, but who designs a, who designs a sidewalk that may be needed for handicapped accessible with a light pole right in the middle of it?
I would have to talk to MLS. I wasn't, didn't do the, or not MLS, but.
ISG.
ISG, who did the design on it.
Well, it's a terrible design. I'm sorry. I'm not handicapped, but you have to be somewhat sympathetic. We've made it very difficult for our handicapped community now to get to that theater very quickly.
Well, and the good news is, is we did go down and look at it yesterday, and the good news is the sidewalk is large enough that you can get on either side.
It is. Until you pile snow, until you pile snow, which they will do.
Correct. And that is something that I would worry about, is it will need to be really cleaned around that, because it will be tight. I mean, we looked at that yesterday. But yeah, I think that, I think as we spoke yesterday, I think that we should look into options of kind of what's going to be the most reasonable accommodation to be made. And I think holding a public meeting or inviting people at a table to talk and brainstorm those ideas so that those recommendations can be made to council, I think, would be highly beneficial.
How about doing it prior to in the future?
Hey, I agree. I just.
I just, I don't understand an architect, an engineer that would have designed that.
Well, we had a public meeting in that.
But Dave, what does, what engineer designs it that way?
Well, I'm sure they didn't take into account the handicapped spots that were down there. That's what it turns out to look like.
Listen, I can get, I know what you're trying to accomplish on the one side is drainage. I get that. I understand that. I've overcome that. I think it's terrible what you did, but you've, I've over, but you cannot, you just cannot ignore the fact that you don't put a streetlight in the middle of a ramp where handicapped people may go. It's just bad designing. There's no, you engineers should not be proud of that type of work. I mean, I don't know what to tell you, but I would not, I don't see when it snows, how there, that's going to be very accessible. I think it's going to be horrible, because I can just see how we're going to push snow there.
Because I think there's only one, right, where there's not a light pole?
Yeah, but it's the main one that goes into the theater.
Well, I would suggest then, if that's the problem, the one to the west.
It's farther west.
Two spots west.
Well, that's where a lot of people that are parking where you're talking about are going to go.
And I mean, one of the things, too, is unfortunately, we used the, you know, this is from the day it was designed. We tried not to put additional poles down there.
Yeah.
And clutter the whole area with poles and signs, so we just tagged the parking signs to poles, and they weren't spaced out and chosen in any particular way. They were just tagged because that's where the pole.
You can do that now that you've got mulch there, easier to put signs.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's just how much signage do you want down there? And that's the thing, we talked about, could we line them up so you hit those curbs? But then you got to take into account every different van variation. Are you going to hit it right? Because if you.
And the size and the.
You size it up for one van, it doesn't fit for another van.
All right.
And I get that, too, and there are those, but I think, yeah, having a public meeting, but I agree before, and we talked about that again before design, I think we should have those conversations and make sure of them, because when you're repouring or doing the mulch, it would have been easy enough to move the sidewalk to one side or the other. We just, I should have caught it, too. I should have made sure I was at the meeting and giving that feedback. The one thing I did want to say, Melissa, too, that Dave and I spoke about was, and maybe you talked this morning when you spoke, was just that cutout area where people are driving through the mulch. If we can make sure to either dirt fill that or pave that, something, because I think especially with winter, it's going to get really bad.
Yeah, that was brought to our attention. I think that what we'll do is we'll put some ballards there.
Some what?
Some ballards.
Okay.
A concrete structure, just to draw attention to it.
Yeah.
Well, to keep the plows out of it, so they don't dig up the plant material.
You know what?
Which I get that, too, but the places that we looked, the one you're cutting the corner, so I get, that's fine. They can drive out and around that. But the other one out to the west end, I mean, that's people are pulling into the space or backing out of the space, so I mean, you'd have to really make sure you're parallel parking if you put a ballard or something.
Unfortunately, they would have to parallel park in that space.
I would not be a fan of the ballard at that west end. I'm just saying.
And I would also suggest that talk to Ed Pickens, and maybe when they're out doing their snow removal, that he might have some good ideas about cleaning things off better. And I, I would also suggest that talk to Ed Pickens, and maybe when they're out doing their snow removal, that he might have some good ideas about cleaning things off better.
All right, thank you. Clark Park Infield Drainage Improvement Project. C is a resolution authorizing final payment to HydroClean for the 2017 annual manhole rehabilitation project. D is a resolution authorizing final payment to Mark Albinicious for the Gordon Drive and South Helen Street Storm Sewer Repair Project. E is a resolution authorizing final payment to T.R. Harris Construction for the Quail Court Deer Haven Drive and Maplewood Street Repair Project. F is a resolution authorizing final payment to Lazard Contract for the Cone Park Design Project. Mark, so, Matt Salvatore and Agent Walsh, who are requesting an amendment.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, the, the heading and resolution should have included approving change order number two, along with the accepting the work and authorizing final payments. We'd like to get that changed if we could.
We have a motion.
I'll move it.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Burke?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Abstain. And I'll abstain on the regular, on the main part of the motion as well. G is a resolution authorizing payment to J's a better restoration for cleanup and remediation of the basement at 3001 Pierce Street. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor licenses, see the list come forward if you have any questions. Thirteen are receipt of minutes, see the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Bring them, we'll vote. Passes five zero unless otherwise noted with abstentions by Mr. Moore and myself. Fourteen's a hearing resolution, a proposal to sell property and authorize the city deed the property at 2837 South Glass Street, petitioner's Chris for Burke, I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Fifteen's a hearing resolution approving a proposal to sell property and authorize the city deed the property at 2901 South Glass Street, petitioner's Helen Jacoby, I'll move it.
Second. I'm abstaining again on this one.
Passes four zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains. Sixteen's a hearing resolution approving a proposal to sell real property and authorize the city deed the property at 2842 South Coral Street, petitioner's Joel McDonald-Wygen, I'll move it.
Second.
Passes five zero. Seventeen's a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property and authorize the city deed the property at 2900 South Coral Street, petitioner's Chad Weaver, I'll move it. Passes five zero. Eighteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the purchase and service, services of the asset renewal phase one, de-watering and odor control procurement project, I'll move it.
Second. Second. Yeah, I guess I didn't say it loud enough.
What's that?
So I guess I didn't say it loud enough.
Oh, I didn't, well, you know, with age, you lose a little hair.
He's just soft spoken today.
Hmm, if he's not a trial lawyer.
You're our historian.
Yes, that's what they say. Who are we waiting for? Me.
The man that seconded it.
Passes five zero. Nineteen's an ordinance amending chapter nineteen point two zero entitled Fireworks Municipal Code to revise times for as of discharge at seventeen, I'll move second reading.
Second.
Anyone to be heard?
We're all trying to get that.
Board, people. One of the things that I have to say about-
Need your name and address first.
Oh, excuse me?
That's okay.
Leo Hammond, twenty-eight thirteen, Edmonds, add, things that I want to point out with this, and that's that the Fourth of July is one of the most revered holidays we have in the United States. And two things on that, and that's whether you pass a more restriction on it or not. Gee whiz, they're already shooting them off in my neighborhood already. I mean, let's face it. I guess number two would be, the time limits that I heard on this was, was pretty short, and the dates were pretty short. If you're, if you're going to celebrate something, do you think that everybody's going to stop at eleven o'clock? You've got to make these laws for them to be obeyed, not through force, but through common sense. Okay? And the same way with the dates, you know, we had, what was it last year, five or seven days?
Ten.
Ten days, in which might be a little excessive.
We all agree, sir.
But I, but I, I do think that if you cut it down to like five days or seven days, I don't think people are going to kick about that at all. But that's just my viewpoint on it, and-
Yeah, thank you.
And you bet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard?
I will say, I appreciate the council's willingness to take the extra week to listen for feedback. I don't know if, if any of you heard from people, I was contacted by a couple people, and more than anything, everyone overwhelmingly said, please do not extend the time. That people went a little overboard this last year, and they were looking forward to a little more peace and quiet. I agree with the mayor, and what he said last week was that, sir, I, I understand we should have at least some time to, to celebrate for those that want to do so. I hope so in a responsible fashion, but I do think that the city is being generous by even allowing two days, because cities all across the state have chosen not to allow it at all. I think there's a great deal of liability and costs associated with even allowing them for two days. However, I understand the, the opposing viewpoint as well, so, but I appreciate council's willingness to give it one more week, so thank you.
I have to agree with Alex also, I, I think we need to come up with a happy balance, and I think that this is what we have now, is a happy balance. Anything over that, I think that people find a way to abuse the, their, it's a privilege to abuse it. And I think this could be another year that we're going to find out if people listen and follow the rules. Because we can, next year, we can just take it all away, so I don't want it, I don't want to see it happen, but, you know, laws are here for a reason.
I do want to point out, I've lived here for forty years.
Just come to the mic, would you please?
I do want to know, want you to know, I do know what's going on in Sioux City here as far as the fireworks.
Yeah.
I've lived here for over four, forty years, and they've been shooting them off regardless. And a lot of it's good, big stuff, and they get the, it's not the lady fingers, it's the heavy-duty stuff. And number two on that, like I said before, we want people to have respect for the law. If you pass this stuff that they're going to respect in the first place, you're teaching them to take it to, further to the next step, and to the next step, and next step. You know, and if, if you abolish it, I don't see any difference in it, it's just that I'm trying to make it for at least it's legal.
It's legal for two days.
Yeah, but you, you understand what I'm saying, you know, if you abolished it, they're just going to break the law.
Right.
Why not make it for that they respect the law?
Well, that's what we're trying to do, and hopefully that, that's what they will do, because it's from one to eleven on the third and the fourth, so this is another test, I guess, see what happens.
And I do realize, and Iowa's been against the law for sixty years.
Yeah, well, you know, yeah, we never had a, it was never legal to sell fireworks before last year, seventy years.
For a little while, but-
So, yeah.
But it's been a long time.
So we're, we're trying to be fair.
We aren't used to it, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, we're trying to be fair.
We're changing the norm, so, okay.
I, too, thank you. For a reasonable period of time, and, and we're always going to deal with enforceability of whatever the law is going to be, whether it's ten days-
Spotter, I have a question, and I forget what our conversations in regard to fireworks were in the past. As far as, I mean, it's been really dry leading up to the New Year's, is there a concern, or when does that? I thought we had a discussion about, you know, if it's especially dry, we make that call prior to of whether or not we're going to allow it this season. I mean, are you having some of those concerns or thoughts?
Sure, and it is particularly dry, Chief Everett, Sioux City Fire Rescue, will ban them outright if, if conditions-
We deem that?
If, yeah, no question.
That's my thought, and are you assessing that at this time? No, I'm, you're a little busy, I don't know if you've had time to assess that necessarily.
Just a little early at this point in time, depending on what kind of moisture we get between now and then, but basically, we'll be looking at it here pretty closely.
But we'll make that call, and it will be on news, media outlets, things like that.
Everywhere we can get it, should that be the case.
Because if this passes, it'll be just for the one day on December thirty-one?
Right.
From one P.M. until twelve thirty A.M.?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
You bet.
And the last point I wanted to make was with actually Chief, Chief Mueller, was just a request, it's an idea that I've had, I think I've floated past maybe one or two members of council, and I forget if I've spoke with you at all, but as far as enforcement, one thing that, and I know it would be additional costs and resources, I understand that that's, that's spread pretty thin, especially when you're going off, oh, they're shooting it off here, or shooting it off there. One idea or thought I had was, I wondered if we coordinated further with the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office, and looked at utilizing maybe reserve officers, and developed somewhat of a task force or something. I know that we had that this last time, or if I remember correctly, but maybe utilization of the reserve program could be a more cost-saving measure, and, and be helpful, I don't know, I mean, I'm just, I understand enforcement is, is a trouble, is-
You're going to have a problem, though, I mean, not that I'm not for what you're proposing, but you're going to have somewhat of a problem around the Fourth of July, because they're taxed for Saturday in the park already, and I don't know about, you know, holidays and that.
Yeah, Rex Mueller, Police Department, we have, we will usually set up a fireworks patrol for about a week around that. In dealing with the sheriff's office, they're usually very agreeable to public events where we need assistance with traffic control, but they're less apt to place their reservists into enforcement roles. So they would probably be adverse to us having them issue citations or anything like that. They're, like I said, they're more apt to do public outreach with us, and they're very, very helpful in that respect, but I'm not sure that the sheriff would sign off on that.
Well, I will follow up with the sheriff.
Well, I'll be happy to, too.
Thank you, Chief.
We'll offer it to him.
Thank you.
You bet.
What are you waiting for? To get my vote? Hey, thanks.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Passes five zero, is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
No.
I'll move it.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Burke?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I'll move third reading.
Second.
Is that a second?
It was.
Get me out of here.
Home manager. No, here, remember I brought him to share? It's Christmas time.
Normally, you buy it for your own grandkid, you don't steal from the city stash.
Twenty's a resolution amending-
When it gets close to seven o'clock tonight, I'm going to break into this.
We're not going to be here till seven. Twenty's a resolution amending resolution number two thousand seventeen zero six eight five, authorizing the city manager to carry out the order of demolition property by authorizing a ninety-day delay in demolition. The property's at twenty-seven hundred and, two thousand seven hundred and nine South Coral Street, the old owner is Home Buyers Inc., yes, sir.
Darrell Bullock, Inspection Services, we were able to work with a financial institution to help make sure this property stayed secured, and, and a new owner was able to come forward. They have provided us the ten thousand dollar cashier's check, and the other supporting documentation for making this move forward, so staff would support granting ninety-day stay of demolition.
Thank you, Darryl.
Thank you.
Listen, does it go, sometimes it's flashing, I don't know if it takes.
Passes five zero. Twenty-one's a resolution approving the eighth amendment to the motor vehicle lease agreement with Gil Halling regarding inflection and disposal of solid waste, I'll move it.
Second.
Will this create any additional expense for the city? Dropping the two trucks?
It's anticipated that the city ownership of the trucks will be phased out, and Gil Halling will take on the ownership. We anticipate that we'll be bringing back the overall contract to renegotiate some of the terms going forward regarding the maintenance provided by the city for the garbage trucks. And additionally, the city currently houses the ones that the city still owns that are under the lease terms, the ones that Gil is taking back under their name, they won't be housed on city property. But we anticipate that that will be looked at in the spring and renegotiated.
Darrell Bullock, acting fleet manager. Mr. Gil is in the process of updating trucks, part of it is due to staffing concerns and so forth, that the new trucks that he's purchasing do not require as much staff, because they're a mechanical device that will pick up the, the cans and dump them without that. He's doing this on his own with his own expenses, which means that the city will no longer have ownership, so this is not that long ago, a few months ago, we brought two other, two trucks that he had traded in at that time for one truck, and he's continued to do that until we get through the entire fleet. At that time, the city will have no ownership in those trucks whatsoever.
So we're going to be out of the ownership of trucks?
Yes, we will be.
Always a bad deal in the garbage collection business, you know that, right? To get back in, it's going to cost you how much money?
Right. True, he's, he's been paying the trucks, and we've just been reimbursing, my understanding, I don't know, wasn't it on the original contracts how that worked out, he paid for the trucks, put them back in the city's name, so that the city was able to provide maintenance for those trucks, and fuel for those trucks, and storage for those trucks.
Do you share those concerns, Darryl? I don't know, I mean, same concerns as the mayor, is that something we should give pause to, or?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a little bit complicated on my end, because I wasn't part of the original collection contract, that's a whole nother contract with another division. I'm looking at it more from a maintenance side, right now, he's not been, they've not been living up to the maintenance agreement either on the trucks, they've been doing their own maintenance without the city's involvement. So my involvement became when I noticed in the decline of service and the amount of fees that were being billed out through the central maintenance garage. At that time, this is when it was brought to light to me about the transition to the newer trucks.
What's a new truck cost that he's buying?
I don't know the number, I really don't, I know they're more expensive than the current models that he's been doing for McGinnis, because they are a heavier truck with a, again, a lot more robotics, because they are picking them up with the one arm instead, so.
And presumably, probably more maintenance or higher cost to fix that if that was-
Higher cost of maintenance, absolutely.
Well, we're getting out of that anyway for him, right?
Yeah.
Three less trucks won't create any service?
He's replacing them, he is replacing them.
He'll still have, but he's going to drop to nine, though, wouldn't he? Isn't he dropping to nine trucks, or is he going to buy eleven?
He, he will keep the number of trucks at the current level.
Right.
It's just the ownership composition will change, he will own the other ones directly.
What's the current level, then, if we, if, if he turns two back in now, is current level eleven or nine?
It'll be eleven.
Eleven.
We have thirteen under our ownership right now, and he'll go drop to eleven as far as city ownership is concerned.
So the city will still own nine, is that what you're saying?
City will still own eleven until which time he trades those in. Some of those are newer, so we won't have, there'll be a number of years before that would transition completely out, but at this time, we would have eleven left.
No, I believe, actually, he pays, he pays for them upfront.
Oh, he does?
Yeah, yeah.
I can, I will double check, but I think the agreement also has a stipulation, if the contract were ever to be expired, they would be titled back into his name.
That's accurate, that's correct.
So, so truly, all were- So, so truly, all we're doing here is allowing him to maintain them himself and buy them himself.
Yes.
The difference for him, as, as Darryl had said, the fuel cost. He has to pay for the fuel for the vehicles that are in Gil Halling's name and not the city. He wouldn't have the benefit of the fuel cost.
Well, that may not be a good deal, anyway, because what you guys charge is not what it actually costs. Well, I mean, the C M G gets more than what I can go buy it at the pump for right now, even without the gas tax, right?
My city car, when I get the bill in the inspections department, it's not for unleaded fuel, but for diesel, it's a little bit more. Right now, we have to, right now.
So he's not gonna lose any by buying his fuel.
Right, because the other entities that we sell the fuel to, it's helped us recoup the costs of actually maintaining the fuel tanks and so forth, and we're looking towards replacement of those tanks as well because of the, they're disintegrating from internal. Okay. Thank you.
I'm good, thanks, Darryl.
Thanks, Darryl.
Passes five zero, twenty-two's a resolution on directing the city manager to sign a funding agreement with Aberdeen Apartments to provide a five hundred thousand dollar in home funds for the rehabilitation apartments, eleven twenty Nebraska Street.
Jill Wandershead, Neighborhood Services Manager. We first presented this item back in, on November twentieth. Received some direction from council, worked with the developers since, and have revised the loan terms. Initially, the proposal included one percent simple interest over twenty years with a balloon payment due in year twenty. Now, the proposal includes one percent interest over fifteen years instead of twenty. Guaranteed principal payments, which range anywhere from about seven hundred dollars up to almost eight thousand per year, and with a balloon payment of four hundred and forty-one thousand approximately in year fifteen. So it shaves off about five years of the loan and allows us to receive guaranteed principal payments throughout the life of the loan.
That's better than it was. So it's a balloon at the end of fifteen, you said, right?
Yes, instead of twenty.
Okay, yes. Four hundred forty-one thousand?
Yeah, so we'll receive.
Is that within, with a? Forget it.
Like, for example, year one, we'll get a payment of about twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. Part of that'll be principal and part of that will be interest, so, so I misspoke a little earlier. The total varies each year from about forty-three hundred to twelve thousand eight hundred.
So why does it vary?
With the inclusion of interest, that's what you mean?
Interest, yes, they make principal payments, the interest per year goes down.
Okay.
And then we'll be able to reinvest that money each year into different projects.
If you go down to twenty-three, what are the terms of that one? It seemed like they were paying better.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You go to the next item, it appears at twenty-three, unless I read it wrong, they, they seem to be paying better than twenty-two. Is that true? I thought their amortization was somewhat different. What?
I am not familiar with that project, I don't know if that's Marty or.
No, it's Chris.
Okay.
Well, I'm Marty.
What are they paying in twenty-three?
They're paying four and a half percent interest over ten years.
I would say the main difference between the two loans is with home funds, they, within a certain debt ratio, and so allowing for these payments keeps him in that same category. If he was to change how the terms are being done similar to that, they'd be out of those standards and would not be able to use low income tax credits.
I agree.
I, I would just add, the, the main difference between these two projects is that the, the projects in item number twenty-three are market rate.
In fifteen years, and we don't get a deal that says, gosh, we can't pay it now, we need to, I want to make sure they understand they're paying in fifteen years.
Understand.
So if that's the case, then. You'll be there, both of you?
Yeah.
Don't look at me.
With some of your votes, I wouldn't guarantee it, boys. Don't get too cocky.
Last meeting of the year. Come on, Mayor.
I'll move it.
I'm gonna abstain, conflict.
That's funny.
I have to admit.
Take it home to the grandkids.
I'm gonna eat it, because it's almost five o'clock.
Thanks, Jill.
Passes four zero one, Mr. Moore abstains. Twenty-three is a resolution approving development and minimum assessed agreement for property at four thirteen Pierce five twenty Nebraska and twenty-eight twenty-five Douglas Street, I'll move it.
Thank you.
So did everyone see the revised agreement that we're voting on?
It was in the packet and they were in here.
No, it wasn't in there.
No, I, I've just gone off the R C A.
I was going off R C A as well.
Yeah, the, the, the terms of the deal have not changed. Councilman Moore had some, had requested some changes that, I guess, just to generalize them, mostly had to do, we, we changed some dates in the rebate schedule and to more closely coincide with the, with the completion dates of the project. And then on top of that, there were some changes regarding some of the notary blocks throughout the agreement.
Well, in defense of your legal staff, next time, let's not wait till the last minute, guys. Let's get it to them so they can review it, so Mr. Moore doesn't have to play city attorney over the weekend, okay? Because that would really help everybody concerned, if we know the agreement, so. Please, try to work harder to get these out.
One question I had was the concern over the historic tax credits. I'm sure, I don't, I don't know if they've filed or anything yet, if they'd be similarly grandfathered in, as it sounds, and maybe the Warrior Davidson project has been, is there concern over that with these projects? I mean, I'm sure that's part of it.
Julie Stavnik from J Development is here, and I guess I can answer a little bit. She knows more about that. I guess in general terms, I can say, she did tell me that they got their phase two approved from the National Park Service today on the Commerce Building itself. And so that'll help their financing go through. There are a couple of other things that I've talked with some of the others involved in the project is, they are also looking at going out to find more private investors to help fill gaps, and they are taking on the role of general manager or general contractor on these, on these projects to, to save costs as well. So they're, they're finding ways to get a little bit more creative and get more hands-on in the project to, to fill some of the gaps that potentially could, could, could occur.
Do you have pro formas for investors?
We, we do, yeah.
Well, if you need help with that, let us know and we can try to.
Great, thank you. Julie Stavnik, Jade Development Company, twenty-four thirty South Seventy-third Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I did want to address the historic, the good news are two, two things. One is we will own the building next week, and then additionally, today, we did get the historic part two approval from the National Park Service today. So those are great hurdles that we needed and were able to pull off, which is great. The other thing is the amendment that has been made, that both the House and the Senate will be voting on, I believe, in the next few days, leaves a twenty percent tax credit in. What it does change is the payout is over five years. We've talked to our investors, we think the discount on pricing should be fairly minimal, so we feel like we're in a good, great place.
Awesome, great.
Good job.
Good. Can you, I'm sure it's in here and I'm sure I've read it, but can you just give me an update? As far as the downtown structures, what, what's the timeline, again?
You bet. The Commerce Building, five twenty Nebraska Street. Our goal is to begin demolition or, or some interior.
Yeah, rehabilitation.
Thank you, February one, and then near, about a thirteen, fourteen month period on that, so we'll be. And the Hatch Building, we're working with banks now to get that financed, and I hope to start probably late spring, early summer. Again, probably about a twelve month, nine to twelve month construction period on that as well.
Yeah, that's not a bad turnaround. I guess the thing I'm worried about or would encourage is just the retail space in the downtown. I think we're looking at expanding and hopefully attracting new people to that, and I think new space available would be something that would aid with that, so the sooner we can get the retail part of it done, I mean, and then work in the apartments, I think, the better. But thank you for.
We're equally as eager on the commercial side, and once we own the building, we'll be working very diligently to, to bring in some partners to lease it up, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Julie.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to add, thank Julie and her team and J Development for everything they've done. I think we've been working on this, these three projects for close to two years, maybe, something like that. They've been incredibly good to work with and very patient. And then with, most recently, having to clear, clear the hurdle of, of what's gonna happen with the historic tax credits. So they've hung in there, and I think we're, it sounds like we're maybe gonna be okay on that, at least workable. And so we wanna make sure we thank them for what we think will be a tremendous impact on downtown and the whole community, so, thanks.
What was decided on the parking agreement? Because you had, like, parking starting six months before the projects were completed. Did that get changed, and is it now five years instead of the four years?
It's, 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 it's five years.
When's it start?
Mid-year, kind of, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of mid-year. I, I assume that was in case anybody moved in sooner.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it runs for five.
It, it runs for five years, and it's, it's scheduled to, to start at about the time that they anticipate being finished with each, with each of the projects.
So that'd be at the end of the year instead of the middle of the year, okay. I think it's great, too. I think it's great for downtown Sioux City, I think it's great for the, on the north side as well, but I just wanted to make sure this was all making sense to me when I went through it, and just wanted to make sure those corrections were made.
Thanks for your help, Dan. These are one of the more complex, I think, agreements we've had in a while, so.
It is, you've got three projects tied up into one agreement and one document. But it's important, we try to be as clear as we can be so that as we go along the way, we can remember what we agreed to and move forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your investment in the community.
Glad to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Passes five zero.
Nicole, could you get me a Redline copy sometime? I mean, not today, but just the next week or so, please.
Sure, I asked Chris to provide that, he made the amendments.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Twenty-four's a resolution approving an inter-credit and subordination agreement for Motor Mart LLC. No idea what that means, but I'll move it.
Yeah, tell us what it means.
Sure, the primary lender on the Motor Mart project on five twenty Nebraska Street has asked for the city to subordinate their primary mortgage, and no.
That's the name of the corporation. Fred went way, way back to the beginning of the building to get that name.
Yeah, I know.
Passes five zero, twenty-five's a resolution approving amendment number one to the emergency ambulance services contract, Sulan Paramedics include the remaining obligations of the parties.
I'll move it.
Second.
Mayor and council, this amendment is to basically close out the current, current emergency services agreement. There are a few housekeeping items that needed to be handled, such as the return of the ambulance vehicles themselves, and then what to do with the actual equipment that was on the rigs that was previously owned by Sulan Paramedics, to make sure that that transitions to the city. Sulan Paramedics will retain one of the ambulances, one of the older ambulances, in exchange for the city taking on the equipment on the rigs.
And they're not gonna come back later and ask for any part of a subsidy. I don't want to do this, and then they come back and say, oh, by the way, this last six months, we need a seventy-five thousand dollar subsidy. We know that for a fact. Because their, their agreement allows them to do that, that's why I'm asking. Agreement, we have a subsidy provision, and we're asking you to make that subsidy whole now. I want it to be done today, and I think the council would, too. But under their terms, they can come for that.
And what, do you recall what the dollar amounts were?
Up to a hundred and eighty-five thousand, I believe. Isn't it?
Nicole, wasn't there language in this amendment that made this, without any other further notice or action on the part of either party?
It concludes with except is modified above the existing contract and amendment remain in full force and effect. So the contract up to January one is still in effect, so they can't.
Is still existing until termination date.
I can't, I'm sorry, sorry, Amber.
Yeah.
No, you're right.
But they can come back, I think they can do exactly what the mayor's.
Up to the date of termination.
I guess my assumption is, is that they, up to now, up to date, if, if we, if it's deemed that we owe them a subsidy, I would assume that they would be on.
You, you think what now?
If up to date, we, we do owe them a subsidy, then I'm thinking that they would come to us for that.
I think they are, too. And we don't have that, we have that budget, but we don't have the other six hundred and fifty thousand to run this thing out for the year. That's my concern. And if we're, I don't want to give them any ambulances till I know what that is. I do, I would have a special meeting before I would give, sign, agree to this today. I mean, I thought, when it says this is the final contract, but I got to thinking about that after I read it today, that they can still come and ask for a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Under the existing.
Yeah.
Up to the date of termination, which is January one, so anything that's accrued to date.
We know they've got that much.
Anything they've accrued to date, they could request.
That would be.
And it's not like we can change to amend to say effective today, as opposed to effective.
Well, we can't hurry to defer because.
They will be providing service up until January one at eight A M.
Well, we can make that as a part of the motion, and they don't have to accept that, that contract. Well, you're asking us to sign on, I mean, that would be a gutsy move on their part, if you ask me to, I'm gonna ask for a hundred and eighty-five.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Was, was this contract on a calendar basis or fiscal year basis?
It was, I believe, approved in October of fifteen, so it was a five-year agreement from October of fifteen to October of twenty.
Conceivably have, I mean, if they were to continue, they'd have nine more months of this contract. No, it expires October first, or they've already carried over for?
They gave an early termination under the agreement. It's a five-year agreement, it would have continued to October of twenty, so they could provide a ninety-day notice.
Yeah, but the subsidy comes on an annual basis, right?
They didn't ask for it, but they still probably have ninety days to ask for it. I don't know what the contract calls for, for last year, but they still would have the right to call for it for these two months, which would be a significant number.
But we're in year, it would have been year four or year two?
We're in year, we concluded, we've gone just past year two.
Okay, so we're in year three, and it still would have had nine months left if they were keeping the contract.
Ten, because it's a ten thirty-one, isn't it?
What's our notice requirement for a special meeting? Because I'm not opposed to having a special meeting between now and the end of the year.
It's a twenty-four hour notice.
Value on that ambulance is three thousand or less. The equipment value, if we were to have to go out and purchase it, exceeds forty thousand. We value it at twenty, twenty-five thousand, but it isn't all, it lets us know what equipment we're getting and when.
And I think that's really good, that's, that's great, but I, I, I don't know, I would be worried about the same thing the mayor is.
I understand the question, and I do, I am, too. I agree.
Well, I think we should be worried about it, but I don't think that plays into the decision whether to do this agreement or not.
Yeah, no, that's for me.
The contract says whether we'll have to pay a subsidy or not.
Yeah, we can't change that.
If we don't want to let them have an ambulance, then we'll have to go out and spend forty thousand dollars on equipment.
No, that's not the point. The point is, let's be done with them and know what the dollar amount is now. Let's don't wait, and then in January, we get a bill for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I want to know what the bill is. I think the taxpayers and, and the council have, we should know that before we vote on a final termination of this agreement, is my deal.
And keeping in mind, they can terminate the agreement. I mean, they've given notice that they can terminate. The closeout items are the ones that are remaining that have to be negotiated. They could stop service because they've given us the intent that they will stop service. It's the balance of this that's yet to be negotiated, as to the trade of equipment.
If this agreement isn't approved by January first, we don't have equipment for the rigs. Well, and I'm all about the transfer of equipment, I'm all about them keeping an ambulance and us getting that equipment, that's fine. That part of the agreement, I'm fine with, but I, I don't want to move this and then open them up to be able to come back. Does that make sense? I mean, I, I'm fine. But they can anyways, they can come back anyways.
We have a contract in place already.
But don't we want to know what that amount is, if any?
Yes, I, I'd like to know, certainly, but.
And if we had a special meeting, would you negotiate that? I mean, would you say, look, we're going to do this. You're not going to come back for another subsidy?
This is the way that the contract reads this, is any subsidy will be capped at the maximum allowable, as indicated below. A subsidy forecast request is to accompany the budget information submission due honor before October 1st of each year.
Right. They didn't that request that.
Right.
But now, we're a new year after October 1st. So, we've got three months' worth of possible subsidies.
From October 1st to the termination on January 1st, yes.
So, that could be $210,000, couldn't it?
Well, I'm just going to get my calculator on to find $800,000 and figure that out.
If the contractor is requesting a subsidy, the request for subsidies shall be made by December 1st in the form of a letter to the city manager and the fire chief.
Right. They have 60 days. I thought it was 90, but they have 60 days.
Okay, so we haven't gotten a letter.
We've not received a letter, no.
You won't, because now it's a termination. They've got, basically implied, they've got 60 days from the date of termination to let you know what that is.
We haven't altered the addition, the existing terms of the contract, but I can't speak to what they may choose to do.
Well, then they've got till October, they've got till December 1st of next year to ask for that subsidy.
Correct. For the three-month period.
Right. That's the latest they've got. They can do it beforehand.
Well, I hope that it doesn't happen, that there isn't a subsidy required. But unless I misunderstand here, we have a contractual obligation. There isn't anything we can do about it. I'd like to know.
You can negotiate. That's what, that's when you terminate contracts, you have a right to negotiate.
Well, and then the problem is, too, I mean, then we hold a special meeting and negotiate. And if you don't have the $40,000 in equipment for the rigs, then we have to go out and spend that, but.
Or the rigs themselves. This outlines us getting the rigs and equipment.
And that's really why we don't have any choice. We've got to have it on January 1st. We can't provide emergency services.
Would they know by, before the end of the year, what their request would be?
You know, if council would like, I can get with legal and finances as early as tomorrow and request a meeting with them and see where we're at on that. As far as moving forward with what we need to move ahead on January 1st, I kind of need this done.
Donna Forker, Finance Director. Dan, in response to your question, they're on a accrual basis, so it's going to take a while before they know what their subsidy is with their billing, with the Medicare collection. It's going to take a while. I would expect at least 90 days.
Well, they've given us no indication that they're going to request a subsidy. That doesn't mean they will or will not, but they have not approached us saying that to expect one either.
Push us past January 1, Mayor. I mean, that's going to, that's going to be a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I don't, if we can't, if that amount isn't attainable for, before the end of the year, then it doesn't serve the purpose of what we're trying to do here, to know that we're just completely done with the contract, that it's completely terminated and no one's going to be asking for anything after January 1. You're telling me that that can't happen based on those numbers, Donna? I mean, based on trying to figure out what their subsidy would be. So, that's going to be a problem.
They have an idea. They have a, listen, when you do this as long as we've done it, and I'm in the business that builds Medicaid and Medicare, you know what the write-off's going to be. It's no magic to it. You've got a good idea of what you're going to, they're going to have, but I don't care. This is.
And I think I would want to call a special meeting and just say, sign saying that you're not going to request a subsidy.
Under the terms of the lease agreement as well, just something to point out, they did have the option to request to purchase the vehicles at fair market value at the conclusion of the term. So, that's another reason why this is being negotiated in this amendment, is to clarify that and how it will work.
Will somebody make a motion then? Have we got a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think we have any choice, Chief, from what you're telling me, then.
I don't either.
I don't, I don't either.
It is frustrating.
Is there any point in calling a special meeting then after this? I mean, we went through with this part.
Oh, you just passed it. So, it's passed four to one. I voted no. I do think we could have had a special meeting, but besides, moving on. Twenty-sixth resolution approving a management agreement with Spectra Venue Management for the management and operation of the Tyson Event Center and Orpheum Theater. Bob, I sent you a bunch of questions and Dan and I didn't get any answers.
I did not receive that till about 3 o'clock this afternoon.
That's because I was terribly busy today.
So, I know Mike has got, received a copy and Amber have a copy as well.
Mayor and Council, this process is just a follow-up to the discussion last week on the food and beverage service. So, we went through a process for requests for proposals. We received two. We brought forth the council and received direction to negotiate a management contract with Spectra Venue Management. The timing of the agreement in front of you is about five and a half, is five and a half years. The first six months do not count towards any incentive for them, being they're being inserted and don't really have a lot of control over the next six months, that immediate term. It's been taken out of the equation for any incentive purposes. However, it is built in to the benchmark establishment. Kind of the major terms are listed in the RCA, but just in general, there's a fixed piece. There's an incentive piece that's made up of dollars and qualitative standards that they can earn more money on, and also capital contributions that are being provided that take care of some initial transition costs. And the city's left with the remaining amount to work out what's best for the facility, position with employees. And I think that is not an easy process, obviously, as well. We'll entertain any questions. I know that I did get a copy of that right before here as well, Mayor. And some of your questions are, those sponsorships are included in that initial 2.5% fee. So, there was a proposal made and we negotiated some of those down. Initially, that was a higher percentage. That was cut in half at the time going through the process. So, those commercial sales do include things like sponsorships, suites, all the existing ad revenues for the building are in those sponsorship fees.
Okay, add, does it include the renewals of the sky boxes?
It does.
And why did we pick one city employee?
We did that because that employee has identified they have less than one year until they will retire and request, and through discussions with that person and Spectra, Spectra was willing to allow that person a time to transition into retirement.
But who's paying that? Is it in their budget?
It's in our budget. If, whether it was in their budget or our budget, we pay because we pay all the costs of all the employees anyways.
No, but is it included in theirs as when the incentive is done?
Yes.
It is.
Expense, I believe, is included as.
It's an operating expense.
Their operating expense.
Yes. To your question on the food and beverage for the food costs, I think they're very confident that they can buy better. So, it is an automatic trigger, just because now there may be sales tax involved on the food and beverage side. The cost would go up, pricing to the customers, because they feel like they can buy it better than we're currently buying it as well on the cost side.
Well, when 40% of your sales, approximately, you're probably beer in that operation. Beer has, beer is very price sensitive. In Iowa, you don't get a lot of ability to discount. So, I don't believe that that's going to be the case at all, as far as the 7% goes. And so, the other problem is, when somebody does an event down there, now all of a sudden, they're getting a 7% charge, where before, we were not getting that. So, for the users, no matter what, you've raised that price.
That is true. They're, they may pay more because of that 7%.
And did we always pay 18% gratuity? I don't know. Maybe we did. We certainly didn't on some of the things that I've done.
Center plate, that was a standard part of their billing.
Well, that's, okay. I must have had negotiated deals and it didn't, because I didn't have that.
At the convention center as well, that was part of their billing.
So, where's that 18% gratuity go to?
That goes to our revenue.
Doesn't go to the staff.
Yeah, I know. I think that's.
See, that's, I don't think that's a gratuity personally, but.
Yeah. When you call it a gratuity, to me, that's taking care of the people that are serving you. And to me, I feel like you're putting their gratuity into the fund and that's not who did the hard work to serve these people. So, 18, and 18% is a good chunk of change when you're dealing with a lot of big events.
Do have three representatives from Spectra here tonight.
I'd like to hear how they feel about that.
Keep in mind, that's the food and beverage contract, not the management contract.
And that was the contract that you approved last.
That contract was approved last week.
Yeah, I'm not, and I can't speak on the contract for the food and beverage.
Nobody knew that, Bob, until I got the pricing this week. We didn't know that last week. I can guarantee I did not know that. So, I'm sorry that you are upset that I'm asking that question, but I didn't know it last week, till I talked to your people on the phone and got the menu. So, it hasn't been.
But that 18% has been a service charge for 20 years.
Call it that, then. I can accept a service charge, but when people, when I pay, when I see a gratuity, that means I'm paying it to the people that wait on me, not paying it to Spectra and to you, the city.
And Bob, I brought this up a couple of years ago also, and this is what I was told. So, I agree with you. I think, I don't think it should be called a gratuity if.
Just raise the prices by 18%.
I think we can just call it the way, whatever it's been called for the last 20 years, we can just.
Well, then, don't, listen, when I order food down there, I tip the waitress, because I know they're not getting the 18%. And when you guys charge it and call it gratuity, guess what I, guess what the average person thinks? I don't have to tip that person.
Right. I'm not really sure what it says in the contract, but I know from the buildings that I ever see, it says service charge on it. So, it doesn't say gratuity on the ones that I ever see. So, I'd be surprised. I don't know if it's.
It's a gratuity. I can guarantee it, because I went through this a couple of years ago. And Erica can.
It says gratuity there now, but it says service charge is on.
It does. I just saw it last week.
Okay. We can address that. We can take a look at with our.
Just raise your prices that much, is what I would tell you. Then, there's not a question what it is.
And there are usually at least tip jars on the bars at our venues, so that if somebody wants to put a couple bucks in when they get a drink or something like that.
That's not what we're arguing about, though. We're arguing.
I know. And I remember that from a couple of years ago, but they do have tip jars in a couple of places that actually are gratuities that go to the staff. But that's different from what we're talking about here, I know.
Exactly. I, I'm with Bob. I think we need to change it to a service charge. You know, if you, if you call it a gratuity, I think you better be splitting this money up for the people that are working. You know, we have big events like the Chamber Dinner. You've got a lot of people out there working and you can't, if you're going to charge a gratuity on the money.
But I can tell you, the facilities that I, that we were in, it says service charge on it. It doesn't say gratuity.
This says gratuity.
But I didn't know, I didn't know it said that gratuity. But certainly, that's something that we would, we would go standard service charge.
Yeah, change the.
Why even have it? Just charge it in the food.
Well, that's true.
Just raise your food prices by that much. Then, there isn't any secret at the end of the, when the bill comes.
Here's the deal. I'll tell you why they, well, this is my feeling, anyway. When it says gratuity, the people that are paying the bill think, oh, that's, that's a gratuity. I'm, I'm given an extra money to pay for, to give to the people. Now, if you raise the price 18%, they're going to go across the river, maybe, because they don't understand what, you just raise your prices 18%.
And a lot of those staff are getting paid off of a certain hourly that, you know, this would all come into that amount. But I understand what you're saying. It's not an additional gratuity added on top of.
Gratuity to the people that are paying the bill and I, I don't know. I just, it doesn't sound right. If I have a, if I have an event down at the event center or convention center and they say, I owe $4,000 and your gratuity is, you know, whatever.
720.
Sub, thank you very much. I love math. I'm thinking, I'm paying, I'm thinking I'm paying 720 bucks to, for all the waitresses and waiters, and it's not.
The definition of grocery receipts and the food and beverage agreement do make a distinction between tips and gratuities paid to employees and to what they call a service charge. The management charge, also known as a service charge. So.
Yeah, that's what we do call service charge.
I think it's set out in the agreement itself. It's probably how it's invoiced or billed that needs to be probably.
They're going to split that. Are you saying that we get all that and they don't get any of it?
It's grocery receipts definition.
Yeah, so that includes the service charge.
Right.
So, I don't understand why, if you're charging it and it's not a gratuity, you just don't raise your prices.
You can say anything you want in that contract, but when you send the bill out, it says gratuity, that's what you think you're doing, is giving a gratuity to the, to your people. I don't care what, what it says in the contract there, because it's not what, what they're sending out.
I'm just saying, though, that I think the distinction's been made. We just have to get it, the invoice consistent with what the contract is.
I agree. I agree.
Tom, would you like to talk about maybe where you're at in the employee transition as well?
Yeah. So, obviously, we're in the middle of the transition. I've been out here several times, met with the employees one-on-one, and I've got a great staff out there like we knew. And we offered everybody positions, had offer letters already completed and sent in and received all of them back. So, the process is moving pretty, pretty fastly here and quickly. And part-time staff, I don't know what the count we're in, but I do see a stack of applications, about a foot deep of them ready to be on our payroll. So, we're, we're doing really well there. We've been having regular onboarding calls with 30-plus people at our corporate office and all the different departments. And Erica's been on the last couple with us, so she sees the resources and hears the resources, gets to know the resources. We also sent Erica out to Philadelphia to our headquarters to meet everybody face-to-face. I think it was important for us, you know, to, you know, for them to put the name to face. And Erica, I don't know if you want to speak how that visit went, but.
Yeah, the visit went really well. And I think it was important for me to understand what resources exist at the corporate level, because then I can bring that information back and share that with our employees. We're going to have a ton of resources that we never had before, best practices that we can take advantage of. Everyone was extremely generous with their time and it was a really good visit. So, again, it was good for me to be able to come back and talk to our employees about that and let them know that, you know, they're all normal people in Philadelphia and they're here to help. So, it was a good visit.
Thanks.
Great.
Did we get through all the mayor's questions that he had, though?
No, but it doesn't matter.
Well, it might matter.
Well, yeah, it does.
Insurance requirements. I don't know if Nicole or Amber, you want to handle that question on insurance.
I believe even though we have within the management agreement, our usual standard minimum insurance requirements that the city has requested, Spectra's advised to us that they have, their insurance far exceeds what we've had. I know we talked to you, Mayor, a little bit before about some of your concerns. And one of the things that the mayor was concerned about specifically was under the general liability, and I apologize, I haven't had the opportunity to discuss this with you beforehand, under the general liability was the issue of specifically fire. And so, I believe the mayor would like to take a look at coverage. It's, it's not part of the contract that's before you for vote. I think that the mayor would like to give staff that direction.
No, I'm not giving it. You said it's covered, it's covered.
Okay. And we also did discuss this with Mr. Traumer, our city risk manager, and he's comfortable with the insurance coverage and the indemnification provisions that we have within the contract and has signed off on them.
One of the exhibits also attached to here is regarding transition costs. So, these are estimates at this point. Obviously, we, as we went through the process, we don't have exact invoices yet. So, we'll true that up based on actual invoices documentation. So, what you have before you is just that. So, it's a pretty close estimation on what those will be.
Anything else on the mayor's list? I just want to make sure we address that, because I have some comments I want to make, Mayor. And, but I want to.
I don't think so. I think that's, I think that's all of them.
Okay. Well, if I may, may I make some comments on this? We've all worked hard to get where we are today, and I've appreciated that. Tom O'Donnell at Spectra, there wasn't a phone call I put into you that you didn't return right away. There wasn't a question that I answered that you didn't answer right away, or if you didn't know the answer. You got the answer and got back to me, and I greatly appreciate that. I think we've set lofty goals for ourselves. Today, we had the EFAB annual report, and they set out their goals and what they meant, and maybe a little bit what they fell short of, and some, some things that went on during the year that they acknowledged. But we have high expectations of the success of the Tyson Event Center and the Orpheum Theater. And we're asking for an increase in the number of shows, concerts, events. We're asking for an increase in sponsorship revenues. We're asking for an increase in ticket sales and attendance. And we're asking for an increase in marketing activities. All of those are monumental tasks, I think, that can be undertaken. And I think they can be achieved if we pull together as a team, because it's going to, it is going to take teamwork. It's going to take our employees. It's going to take the city manager. It's going to take city council for us all to pull together. Some of the things I want to highlight, though, that were important to me, and I think to all of the council and mayor, had to do with employees, and I'll get to that in just a minute. The Exhibit A to this. The Exhibit A to this agreement sets out all of the managers, and the managers of, is, is Spectra, sets out all your duties. I think they're very thorough, and I, and I think they're very, uh, they're very good, and I, and I appreciate having two and a half pages of duties that you've willing, that you're willing to undertake. Article three of the management agreement talks about compensation. There's a fixed management fee, a hundred ten thousand dollars per year. And then on top of that, there are incentive fees. The qualitative fee is up to twenty-five thousand dollars in each operating year. The operating year goes from July one to June thirtieth. Those are measurements. Those are performance areas. There are five of them, as I've read the contract, and it's the city's discretion as to whether you're meeting those five performance areas or not meeting those. They include community involvement, increased community use of the facilities, that's the first one, repairs and maintenance, very important to the success of those two facilities, results of customer survey scores. You're willing to have customer surveys done and scoring that, and we're all going to see that, and it's going to be very transparent. Achievement of annual event goals. You're going to set the goals. Have you achieved them? Similar to what the E Fab Board has done with its annual report and, and, um, and on the facilities. I think it's very good to have that, uh, annual event goal, goals, and then the stakeholder relationships, which is extremely important to the success of any of these facilities. If we're going to improve, lower the subsidy, and really make this spectacular. I have been to some of your venues in other parts of the ci- uh, of other parts of the state, and you, you do a fabulous job of operation, and, and it's a real teamwork effort, and you can tell that when you walk in, there's a, there's going to be a, um, there, there's going to be a guest experience. I, I think our guest experience has been good in the past, and we can always, and, and it's true with anything, especially in the entertainment industry, we can always improve, we can always do better, and I think the guest experience, I'm expecting, high expectations, I got to be careful, but we're expecting, uh, a really fabulous, um, guest experience. What I also wanted to point out, then you have the quantitative, uh, incentive fee. Uh, twenty-five percent of increase in revenues here is June thirtieth, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. We're going to average those and see if you increase the revenues. Uh, and if you do, you, you have twenty-five percent as an incentive fee on those. What I want to conclude with is I, I, and Mr. O'Donnell probably got tired of my phone calls, but it was extremely important that I worked with you, because I think I've stated before that we're trying to build trust with you and you with us, and you don't, trust is not a gift. You can't just say we're going to trust you and just have at it. You have to earn that, and you know that, and I'm, I'm preaching to the choir, I know. But in, in that trust buildup, I think you've done a good job with the employees, building that up. And let me tell you why I feel that way. First of all, most of the employees, I think, are coming on board.
Most of them, yeah.
Yeah, maybe not all. I mean, you might not have the hundred percent that you've had in other venues, but it's a, it's a good percentage. I mean, it's a majority. And I just want to point out, and I'm going to read, because I think this is important, that you included in the management agreement, you addressed that of how we treat our employees here in Sioux City. And it's in here in, in Article six under Personnel. It says, "Subject to passing background checks, manager," and that's Spectra, "agrees to offer employment as of the effective date in positions to be determined by manager to all of the full-time staff employed by the city at the facilities immediately prior to the effective date, except for the city retained employees defined below," and that's the one the mayor talked about earlier. "Such employment shall be offered at the same base compensation rate, subject to the city approving such cost in the operating budget, but such employees shall receive benefits under managers' benefit programs. However, any full-time employee who receives a paycheck from the city in the month of January shall be covered under the city's health insurance policy for the month of January twenty eighteen, and shall transfer to the manager's policy effective February, February one, twenty eighteen." I want to thank you and commend you for ha- including that provision in the contract that you wouldn't necessarily have to have that in, because you could argue that, that's going to tie our hands, that's going to, that's not going to allow us to grow the facilities like we want to do. That's going to hinder our goals. You didn't say that. You've, you've included that, you've put that in there. I think it's a well-drafted, um, it, it's well-drafted, and, and you've, uh, Rick, you, you addressed how, how it's gone with the employees, but I'd like to get Tom's impression too, because I know you and I have talked one-on-one a lot, and you know that it's extremely important that we not only retain our good employees, but after a year, after two years, if they're doing the job, if they're doing their job under their job description, they're going to stay on. I want to really dispel any rumors or any thoughts that you're going to come in, use our employees, get what you need, and then they're going to be gone. There's just no truth to that. And, and you haven't done anything to, to, uh, to even give us that, that thought. The, the thing we have to be careful of, because I don't like change, I, I'll tell you that right now. I don't like change, but, but I, but I go with change as I build up the trust of what that change is. And I want to encourage our employees, if they have any questions at all. And like I said, Spectra has answered every question I've asked, and I've asked some pretty tough questions. And if, and if the employees don't want to ask their supervisor, they don't want to ask Spectra, ask the city manager, ask a council member. I might not know the answer, but I'll sure try to get the answer, and I think I can go to, to, to dispel any kind of rumors, any kind of hearsay that there might be, because this is a, this is extremely important, that this transition, that it goes well, and that we're all successful, because if you're successful, we are, we're successful, and you are. And I can't stress that enough, so I just want to thank you again for, um, what you've done on this, but could, Tom, could you just say a few words about our employees? And I, and I think we do have a great, uh, team, and I appreciate that you've acknowledged that several times.
Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're proud to, um, you know, we really appreciate the city's feedback on the staff that were there, and I think, you know, Rick's, uh, and our other, uh, regional resources that have come into the building have, have found that we have great staff there, and we're very excited to be working very closely with that staff. Um, we have, as you were saying, no intentions of, of, you know, doing anything with that staff, but we're proud to have them and a part of our Spectra family now, so. Uh, everything has been tremendous so far, uh, in, in talking with those employees, and we believe in our company, and we believe that the, as Erica was saying, those additional resources, we'll be able to provide to the staff, and that staff will continue to grow, and they'll be able to continue to take this facility to the next level, so. Yeah, we're proud to put it in there, and I think we were even encouraged as we were going through the interviews with the staff.
And do you know where you're at as far as applications or how many are left to turn in?
We have about forty part-time folks that have not turned in applications yet, so the managers are following up with those people to find out if they are going to submit or not, and then we've heard back from all of our full-time employees at this point.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I do want to add one, one thing. Uh, in addition to the, the great employees we have here, we actually added a member of our team. He's back there. Um, our Director of Marketing, Assistant GM, um, that's been in our system in marketing and in a few of our buildings, including Des Moines. Uh, he's going to be joining us here, um, as part of the Spectra team, so Enzo is back there. Send him a wave.
I was going to say, he didn't come sit with you.
Come on up, and, come on up and introduce yourself.
Well, let's get everybody's name, because right now, we haven't had it for the record, please.
So Rick Hahn, Spectra, Regional Vice President for Spectra.
Tom O'Donnell, Director of Business Development for Spectra.
Yep, and I'm, uh, Enzo Karenante, Assistant General Manager, Director of Marketing.
Welcome to Sioux City.
Thank you.
Are you done saying all the good stuff now?
Well, I mean, it is good, it is good stuff, but it, but it's cha- it's going to be a challenge. I mean, it's, there's no question it's going to be a challenge, because, and it's not going to be overnight. You're not going to be able to do this in the next six months, and we're going to, we're going to be there. It's going to, it's going to take time, so. You know, I, yeah, I think I'm done, Mayor, but I just, I, I wanted to stress just how helpful Spectra was with our employees. And, and I, I've been checking the past couple of weeks and haven't heard any complaints, and maybe they'll call me tonight, and that's fine, but but I haven't heard any, I haven't heard any complaints. The other thing, somebody said this earlier, I don't know if it was the mayor, somebody acknowledged that Spectra came in earlier than you really needed to, that you would, that it's, it's not customary probably in the industry, but you came into Sioux City because we had those questions. The unknown has been really hard for a lot of us, just not knowing what it's going to look like, what Spectra is, and, and you, you came early, and we appreciate that. You took the time, and you, and you devoted it to Sioux City, and, you know, I, I think each and every one of us up here, we're, we're just trying to make things really, really successful. And, and that's our intent, and, and everything's being done in good faith, and they're. Mayor, if I, if I heard anything from Tom that was negative.
I've heard what you said. I, I just want to say a few things, but I want you to finish.
Okay, but I would, but I would bring that out, but there, but there hasn't been anything, so.
Tom's a great salesman. Anybody else have anything to say?
I'll make it short and sweet. Thank you. We appreciate everything you've done so far. Everything, you know, everything happens for a reason, and I think that, um, we're going to do really well. Um, I know that a lot of the employees are, you know, it's the unknown, and I think once the things happen, and we get it, get the show on the road, as we would say, I think that they're all going to figure out that it's, 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 it's going to be a, a good organization, so thank you.
I have a few different things. Um, one of them that I wanted to ask about, and just, most of them were just clarification and questions. One of them I wanted to ask about was the qualitative fee. Um, as far as the results from customer survey scores and stakeholder relationships, what does that look like? I mean, is there a baseline of what you're going to be putting out there, and then, then where it's going to come before us, or the city manager ultimately decides that and looks at that data? How does that?
Well, it, it's, it's, well, we have systems in place in other buildings, but it's going to be up to you guys, what you guys want to see, but typically, our, our standard would be have it, we'll have a promoter, um, user, um, survey that they fill out and they send back to us, and then we also have a fan survey too, that we like to hand out to random fans and get their, their feedback. And we compile the score, and we provide it, you know, to the city, so.
Okay, so we're going to be collecting more data to make a more educated decision upon that?
Yep. From users and.
It just wasn't outlined, and so I just want to, I don't want it to be like, well, it feels like we're doing a good job, so I think we deserve the twenty-five thousand. You know what I mean? I want to make sure that we have data.
And it's out of the discretion of the city to, to allow us.
Okay, so after this, we.
Well, there's never been an employee here that got.
Thanks for taking the heat off me, Pete.
He said that in a good way, Pete. I just feel.
I just want to make sure that we have that data. I want to make sure they're actual, like, data points and benchmarks, and we can look at what the baseline is and what we want, and what the expectations are. I mean, I just didn't see it outlined, and I just think some of these are so vague, you know what I mean, that it's like, well, yeah, I think we are. I just don't want to be basing it off of that. I want to see.
We could share, we can share examples, um, and then you guys can, can change the survey if you want, like, you know, I'd rather look at this, and I mean, so it's different, different places, but we certainly have a template that we use in most places.
And that's fine, and it's something small and simple. I just, I think we need to watch the twenty-five thousand dollars and make sure that it's earned and see where we can improve, and even if there are areas to improve, I'm not saying that you don't then deserve if there are improvements there, but things that can be done, you know what I mean? Uh, next thing that I was wondering was about the contribution. Just the language in here was a little confusing. I, I'm not as educated in that legalese as Mr. Moore, um, but I was just wondering, those improvements in that contribution, does it, where, what page is that on? Why did I?
It's on page seventeen.
Seventeen, thank you. Um, as far as, it's not that one.
First contribution in A.
Correct, yeah, first contribution. I just wondered when, why does it say on seventeen? Thank you. So when it's talking about, um, just paying it, shall be, um, amortized or paid out on a straight-line basis over the, um, sixty-six-month period, are we thinking that contribution happens in the beginning and updated of the facilities and that? Or the way I'm reading, it seems that it's paid out all the way to twenty-twenty-three, and I don't think that's.
No, it's paid out, it is paid out upfront, but it would be, if we were to terminate the contract at thirty months, they would amortize thirty months off, and we would have to repay thirty-six months, but it's paid all upfront.
In January. Okay, that's what that language is about. Then, uh, the next thing I had a question about was.
Does that counsel, it, it shows that they reduce the subsidy by two hundred, they get twenty-five percent of that back, or how's it work? Okay, just checking.
So the next question I had was the.
Be careful in these agreements, Bob.
Fiscally responsible, the reporting, the monthly financial reports, was, I was just wondering if, in addition to the monthly financial reports, if counsel could maybe be given an update um, as regularly as possible, if it doesn't necessarily have to be month. I would just like a comparison if we're looking at attendance, the events, um, revenue generated, ticket sales, things like that. I would just like to be kept abreast of what's happening, whether it's a monthly basis. That can be negotiated, or we can talk about it.
So, yeah, we can, um, typically, I would say three-quarters of our facilities, uh, whether it be city or, or county governments, they like to have updates monthly, and we have monthly financials, so it's something as, as easy as Erica coming here and just going through the, the top-level sheet of what you just said, where we ended up for the month, and, uh, so that is a very typical thing we do.
Okay.
Yeah, they will provide them to the city manager's office on a monthly basis, and we can provide them to you.
Okay. Yeah, I would just like to see this, whether it's a side-by-side and how we feel we're improving, or whatever numbers you can be able to provide. That would, that would be beneficial. Um, I think, I think that was the last thing that I had as far as notes or any actual contract. Um, I spoke with, I spoke with legal and team about the contract as far as, um, looking at tourism. That's something that I've been talking a lot about. I understand the light item. I understand that you're going to be, um, kind of directing that or at the helm, at least in this interim period, as we look at other avenues or options. Um, and so I appreciate that, but I just wanted that to be said, that we're working on that at least, and I think that we can continue to work on that so long as it's not an extended period. And I think that's to your interest as well as ours, so. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Let me say, uh, I was going to ask every single one of these questions, but now that they're all answered. No, seriously, uh, I just want to thank you, uh, from the first meeting that, uh, I was involved in. You've been extremely professional, been very responsive, uh, have provided, uh, a great amount of information, uh, and I know the challenge ahead of you, but I think you've done it very well, uh, and, and I'm, I just choose to remain optimistic. I think we've entered into something that was a hard decision for counsel, be the right decision, and that we will have a long-lasting relationship, and, and I feel very comfortable, I hope I'm right, in that as issues come up and they, sure as the day is long, will, uh, we'll have the opportunity to communicate back and forth and, and work together, uh, to, uh, solve whatever any issues may come up, but. But certainly, from your presentation and, and your involvement and the trips you've made, I'm very thankful. I appreciate your earnest, uh, abilities, uh, to, to be here and to share, and, and, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Well, for a guy who has more to lose than gain by this agreement, as you're well aware, I do have concerns, and the concerns, concerns continue to be this. For seventeen years, I busted my tail going out and getting sponsors. And it's not easy work. But I know how to get sponsors easier than anybody, and that's go around the arena at a hockey game and figure out which ones I don't have. Go around an arena at a football game, figure out which ones I don't have. And then alls you have to do is convert those to sales at the detriment of the sports teams in this community. And you can tell me that's not going to happen, but I've checked with other arenas, and the potential exists that it will, that you've managed. And that's a real concern for me, and it ought to be, because nobody else up here makes any money down there but me, and so I have a selfish interest to make sure that somehow that partnership works, because it works for the teams out of this community in Sioux Falls and other places. But you don't really have an incentive to share that, because you're not going into a new building. And it's, it's a real concern for me that I, listen, I, as I told you last week, I can get out of football next, next week, and I'm fine. But you've got a hockey team that's got forty-one games there, so I'm going to speak for them. They've done a great job, and they lose money in this market every year. They, they're not proud of that. But that guy puts a big investment in this community. And, and for him to lose any sponsorships only means that we're that much closer to, you know, people don't do sports teams purely out of ego. There is a cash flow aspect. When it gets to be too much, you get out, so I, I would caution you to make sure, you don't have to worry about me, but I would caution you to develop that partnership with the hockey team, because I think that's terribly important, that that mix doesn't get thrown off to where they're not at a point where they can continue their operation. That's a, that's a huge concern for me. Listen, football can go away, the people that work there, they'll have six less nights they get to work and all that. But at the end of the day, hockey is a big, big part of that arena. You know, I've watched Congress pass a tax. You know, I've watched Congress pass a tax bill now in a very short timeframe, a major piece of legislation, quite frankly, ill-conceived, and we're all going to find out how ill-conceived about the end of the week. And I think, you know, you put a lot in this agreement in a short period of time, so I hope we've got everything covered, because bad agreements done quickly are even worse than bad agreements done over a long period of time. So I hope that everybody here knows what they're into. And I tell you what, I would never vote, I'm not going to vote for this thing, it has nothing to do with you, and it has nothing to do with anybody. I have, I said the day I took office, because there were certain employees in this building that got treated differently, and I would never vote for an agreement where one employee or two get treated differently than the others. I've stood by that, and I'm going to stand by that until I leave office, because I think as a community, we need to treat all our employees the same. And for one employee to continue to be covered under Ivers, who does a great job, and I have a lot of respect for, that's not the point. The point is, we ought to not, in this business, treat employees differently. Nobody can make an argument to me that that's the right thing to do, that's a bad thing to do. And you're going to have discontented employees, because, well, I was two years away, why didn't I get it? I was four years away, why didn't I get it? And what answers do I have for them? None. And it's a terrible agreement when we do that. There's no justification for that whatsoever. So even though I've abstained all along, I'm voting no on that principle alone, because I think it's a bad precedent that we've set here today that will haunt us down the road. Now I've given my speech, and let's vote.
We need a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
One last thing that I just would say, Tom, Rick, and Enzo, everyone, Erica, everyone, was just, I would really like, one thing is just to address the concerns that I think the mayor has, as well as with hockey and otherwise, is making sure, whether it's with the qualitative or just, I would like it to be a lot more than just that, but having them at the table and actually beneficial. I mean, I think you can look into ticket sales, whether that's with suites, or whether it's sponsorships. I mean, I think that this whole infighting and battling for different people, and then hitting them up twice, and, well, you're doing Musketeers, but you're not doing the Bandits, or you're doing this, I think that's juvenile, and not, just not a good business practice, I guess, is, as far as an arena. I don't want them going out and hassling our businesses twice. I mean, if we can say, look, do this, and then buy so many tickets for all of these events, not just the concerts, because I think at the end of the day, when you're looking at suite holders, when you're looking at the people that are coming, we want to support not just these big shows, we want to support those events that are happening right here that make, I think, Sioux City and the Tyson Events Center a great arena and a great tour community. I think it's those things that your average working person can go and enjoy. I mean, it's not spending an arm and a leg to go catch a huge concert, it's just going and maybe watching or catching some entertainment that night. So I would really encourage you, and I would hope, that even if the mayor wasn't sitting here, or didn't hold the, you know, the Bandits and things like that, or on that, I think that we need to do a great job of having everyone at the table and saying, how can this be mutually beneficial? And it's not to just those people there, it's also the food service. I mean, and we've talked about this, I've talked about it with the two of you, is that, you know, we need to make sure that we're looking at local partnerships, and I know you're doing that, we talked about it last week, but I think having them at the table and saying, how can we make this mutually beneficial, is something that's really important. And I hope that, I hope that continues on multiple fronts.
And we will, and yes, we've talked about it, and I know, and Erica and I have exchanged emails right after the meeting last week, and that's what, you know, kind of spurred the conversation with the Musketeers and with the mayor, and, you know, I sat down with the Musketeers earlier today, so we're making sure that we're staying active in the community as well.
Great. Well, I appreciate that.
Anyone to be heard?
Okay, is there a second?
Mm-hmm.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes. Your voting panels are ready.
Mine isn't.
You already voted, I think.
Well, still she's lying, so, okay.
Not lit up, Mayor?
No.
End it and start again. Okay, start again.
Pass is four to one, I vote no. We'll move on to citizen concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Erica.
Any citizens to be heard? Please come forward.
Seeing none, we'll go to council concerns. I thought maybe your dad thought that it was like a seed convention, he was going to get a free dinner or something today, I couldn't imagine.
Thought I sat there long enough, he'd get up, and so... Rick Bertrand, 1501 Peavy Street, Sioux City. Real quick, I just wanted to, I know this is the last session before the end of the year, is that right? Got one more?
Yes.
Last one.
That's it.
The, a couple, two topics I wanted to give an update. First, about a month ago, you guys approved the closure of, would have been Cedar Street and out there, that old dump road. I want to give you a one-month update on the progress and where we're at with that. It's been one month since the closure of that road. First of all, I thought the city did an outstanding job of actually physically closing it. They took the fence all the way to the corner posts, which was, I thought, one of the nice things they had done, they hadn't done in other places, which really cut off your four-wheeler traffic and your motorcycle traffic, so they did a nice job of actually sealing the property off and marking it, so I wanted to say thanks to the city for that. And then after one month, there's not been one incidence of dumping on the road. We were getting two to three dumps a week, and we've not had on either end one pile of garbage on the road, which is huge. Since the closure, we have not had the four-wheeler traffic, which is very consistent out there, that racing up and down, coming from Greenville and then coming from the park, it's gone. It just doesn't exist, which is huge. That's a big deal for the people that are out there. In the first month, I can tell you right now, especially in the evenings, early evenings, and on the weekends, we've not heard one gunshot, which means that that's your poaching. That's the stuff that happens on that road, deer carcasses, other things like that, so that has kind of come to an end on that road out there, which is a huge win. And the speed itself, which I think is one of the main issues, which is the hill which is coming up, Fourteenth, that's kind of that ramp, that launch pad that they have right there, Mulberry Street, nice city gravel road, it's a dead end. So again, on behalf of the actual eleven people that live on the road, I just want to say thank you for that. I know it takes courage to make decisions like that when you're cutting access off. With that being said, I also want to, again, thank you. I want to be proactive. I know that there's also some negative out there, and I know that you've had some complaints that have come to this chamber and talked about it, and I want to address those real quick. I also know that there's a petition that is circulating right now for the reopening of that road, and I know you guys catch, as an elected official, you take those phone calls, you got to hear them, but I also want to know that the petition that's being circulated, I'm not trying to downplay it, I'm not trying to badmouth it, how it's being circulated, or people signing on it, at some point, I know it's going to come in front of you. But what I can say is that I want to debunk some of the things that will come out of this petition. Number one, which is that it cuts off access to the back way to Cedar, or to Correctionville Road. That's simply, if you actually would have went out before, like we talked about when we closed it, if you would have timed it, it's not a shortcut, it's not a physical shortcut out there to go that back way. You're not trapping anyone. If you actually do the math, if you do, if you're coming out of Kelly Park, if you're coming out of the park area, you jump onto Fourteenth and Martha, you take Logan straight over, it's pure concrete, the difference is you can't go ninety mile an hour. It dumps you right out on a Correctionville Road, which is right behind Taco Bell. So if you're going right or left, doesn't matter. If you're on Correctionville Road, you're doing the cut-through, if you actually take a stopwatch from Fourteenth and Cedar, and you take it to the highway the same way back and forth, it's actually faster if you take the highway route. So I'm not downplaying the significance of people like, the responsible people like to take that back road. Hey, man, it sucks. I used to like going that way to Menards and to get my groceries and other things, but the benefits that are happening out there and the transformation in that property, I like the idea, again, we talked about before, which is give it a year, see if there's any complaint, see really what happens, as people, people don't like change, I get it, but they're not trapped back there, and actually, there is a back way route. So that was the only update I wanted to give on that. Thank you for that. I think that communication is the key when you start talking about these things, and I appreciate you on that. Second thing real quick is, I know that another, you get probably be in a few calls on, is I want to just put a closure, or to the end of the year, an update on, I'm going to put my developer cap on now on Floyd Boulevard, on the Chestnut Project, and kind of where we're at there. The city made an investment there. I want to let you guys know that we're on time, we're on budget. If anybody's been up there, I know the mayor's been up there, and Rhonda, I know you're headed up there this way, and I appreciate that. We've got a lot of iron still in the ground, we moved about 200,000 yards of dirt, we got about 30,000 to go. We've actually got 1,000 feet of road in, we've got four, our goal was to get one foundation and the model up. We've got four of the first six buildings that we were required to get up by July 1. We'll have the other two in yet this fall, so all 12 units will be up. The significant part of that, as a council, is, for your perspective, is we're going to have all the utilities in, and we'll have all concrete in by April 1, which means that we will get a good seed, a good spring seed and plantation in, so by June 1, that site will be green, and it will be controlled. From the neighbor's standpoint, we've got three hot spots, I like to call it, that we continue to manage, really on all three corners. Our friends at the Oldell Coliseum, we had some properties, some civil issues that are going on there, I'm sure that has some rumblings within here, let you know that we're addressing those, the line's been identified now, we're working through that, and we will come to a solution there, just to make sure. Up on top, the farther we get away from the Chestnut, I can tell you that the folks to the east are very supportive of us cleaning up, we actually been going in there and knocking down some cottonwoods for people that cost them thousands, we're trying to help the neighborhood out. So just, you know, from a PR standpoint, we're getting there, I invite all of you up there, but at the end of the year, I want to let you know that that project is doing really well, and I'd answer any questions, or I'll just, let's go home and have some dinner, so...
Rick, you ought to be a little bit more excited.
Hey, you know what? It's a great project, Rhonda, you know it's...
I agree, you know, and that's what, that really excites me, because I know that you get things done, and you like to stay on top of things, and you do things right, so I really, really appreciate that, so...
Thank you. And again, we've really tried to stay on top, and Nicole, I know you take a lot of the phone calls, and I want to thank staff, and this is the suck-up part of the meeting, the staff, but they really have done a really good job, again, of trying to work with us when there's, and again, we know we stumble, but there's times that we do, but we move forward, and they've done a great job working with us and not against us, and it's been a great partnership, and it's going to be a great addition. That hill is, it's going to look great. So again, thanks for coming up, and I just want to say thanks. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Anyone else? Mr. Gretkin?
No, knowing that it's the last meeting, just Merry Christmas to everyone, all the city employees, council, and the community, and I hope it's a safe, and it wouldn't bother me if it was a non-white Christmas.
Because we're going to be doing Cone Park, and the way...
What time is that?
That's at 1:30, so we don't want to be late. And the way I understand it, maybe three of us council people are going to be taking a little trip down the, down the hill.
Have fun.
Oh, you're not one of them?
No.
Okay, so...
And...
You give me time, we're going to figure it out.
And make sure that you charge them out if you're still here, because that way, they're not council members, they're citizens, and they don't can collect liability, not work out.
Oh, I never looked at it that way, but...
The mayor thinks it's real on everything.
We're hoping we don't get hurt, I mean, that's our main goal.
We're hoping you don't either, because you're on your own.
Oh, no, this is city property. Oh, I've been there. Get ready, Nicole.
That's going to be great.
I'm not going to that this time.
Anyway, tomorrow, at 1:30, we're doing a ribbon cutting at Cone Park, and we're going to be one of the first few going down the hill.
Y'all going to be in your snow bunny outfit, like, I'm coming just for that.
Well, of course, Bob, why wouldn't we be? We'll have our little ears on.
It's the way we are now, right?
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be nice to go down the hill instead of over the hill? I hope so.
We've already been over the hill, that's the problem. I just want to go down there.
You just got it. Another shot, yeah.
Other shot.